All right, good evening all. Welcome to the Harwich Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing this night, Wednesday, December 19th, 2018. We opened at 7:00 PM here in the Griffin Meeting Room, Harwich Town Hall. We'll call the cases one at a time that are on the agenda. We'll invite the public to participate at the appropriate time. Our normal clerk, Mr. Hillyard, is not here tonight. Mr. Hedersted will be acting as clerk. And I need to tell everybody we're being videotaped, so tomorrow or at latest the next day, we'll be on the Channel 18 YouTube site. If you, you know, need to look further at what happened, you can go back and look at that. They do an excellent job, I have to say. I'll ask the board members to introduce themselves, please.
Natalie Muller.
Dean Hedersted.
Dave Ryer.
Al Donahue.
Mike Capoli.
Megan Mayhew.
And Sheila Delaney, Secretary.
All right, Mr. Hedersted, if you could call our first case for us, please.
Case 2018-35, Nancy A. Taylor and Peter Taylor have applied for a special permit to add a second floor living space in a pre-existing non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2; Area Regulation, Section 325, Table 3; Height and Bulk Regulations are set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 57 Corner Wood Drive, MAP 32, Partial F1-5, in the RH zoning District. No communications from anybody, either the town or interested parties.
Mr. Donahue.
I'm all for it.
Who's voting on this?
I'll vote on it.
Okay, but you should declare you're on the street, though.
Oh, okay. I live on Corner Wood Drive, but I plan on voting on it.
But that will not affect your decision.
Not affect me one bit.
You can't even see, Corner Wood goes around like that. You can't even see the other, this house from Al's house.
Okay, do we have the applicant present? If you could come up to the table, please, and introduce yourself, or selves.
Hi, I'm Nancy Taylor.
I'm John Kerr.
My husband, and builder.
Okay, on the case, we'll have voting Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, and Ms. Mayhew. I will not vote, but I'll participate. So if you could, present us your application, please.
Okay. What we're proposing to do is put a second floor on the home.
Little more volume.
Okay, sorry. We'd like to put a second floor on the home to be able to have a second bedroom. The existing second bedroom, we've kind of hijacked to expand the master bedroom space so that there can be, we could enlarge the bathroom by using the closet that was there already and make kind of like an office and closet space out of that second bedroom. We also took some of that second bedroom space to bring the laundry to the first floor. All of this design is really in mind with my father getting older. He's 81 years old and trying to make the house like as accessible as possible. It's kind of, you know, older and was not, you know, I think conducive to somebody who's aging. And so in order to have a second bedroom, given the size of the lot, the only way to have a second bedroom in the house is to move up. And, you know, there were two ways that we considered doing it, either trying to do it above the garage or putting a second floor on the main portion of the house. And I think aesthetically, putting a second floor on the main part of the house is much more efficient and fits within the, kind of, the neighborhood and the other homes that are there. So what we'd like to do is be able to put a second bedroom with a full bathroom upstairs and then use some of the space for like a TV sitting, like loft area. But that's the gist of the, of the project.
Okay. Anything further?
I'm not sure if there's anything else that I need to be saying besides that.
Okay, well, we'll go through the board and see if they have any questions for you.
Okay, sure.
Ms. Muller.
No, I went and visited the property. Is it possible to have the mics turned down a little bit? We seem to be catching every tiny sound with an echo.
Turn down the TV.
Great, thank you so much. I understand you would be adding 155 square feet, more square feet from the chart. Okay.
Yeah, we don't want to finish the whole, you know, upstairs as we do it, just enough space to have the, you know, like I said, a bedroom, a bathroom, and then a sitting area.
And if I saw the information about what the new height of the building would be and whether it would be within the requirements, I overlooked it.
Should be a cross-section there somewhere, those drawings.
I think on page A5.
Okay. So the height is?
Is that shown? Does she show the height? Does that show the height? Right, no, actually, I don't think she...
Okay, that would be my only, only question to be, my only concern would be to be sure that we're within the town's height restrictions, which is what, 10 or the height?
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Because that was one of my issues.
Well below that.
Okay.
We're only 90 inches to the first floor. And then we're adding a 12-pitch roof, which will probably be about another 12 feet on top of that.
Okay.
You're only looking total about 18 feet or so, all in all, I think.
When it's, when it's done, it'll be maximum 18?
Yeah.
Okay, as long as it's under 30, that's...
It is, well under 30, yeah.
Oh, definitely.
It's very narrow, and the house next door is pretty high, so that's a deeper building, so.
Right.
And you can see that from this picture right here. I took a picture before we left.
Right, mathematically, because the house is not as deep with that roof, it's going to be lower than the house next.
Okay, and it looks like you've already started work on the outside, on the first floor.
Yeah, so we did get a permit to do the work to the existing part of the house.
Okay.
Yes, we're renovating the first floor right now.
Okay, no other questions?
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no questions, although I reviewed the documents. I did not visit the site, however, and I believe it meets the, the application meets the Gale case in that it's an extension of the nonconformance rather than something new. It was no, there's no new, no, no new nonconforming, so it meets the Gale case.
I have no questions. Mr. Donahue.
I was picking up the same thing Mrs. Muller mentioned with regard to the height. However, the home is clearly under 30 feet.
Okay, great.
No questions?
Ms. Mayhew.
I agree about the height, as long as it's under 30 feet. When it's completed, then I don't have any other questions.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak either for or against this application? All right, hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second? All right, public hearing is closed. I'll ask the board members to state their positions on the case, starting with Ms. Muller.
I would favor this case. I think a yes vote is justified under the Gale, Gale case. It's a modest change.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no problem. It meets the Gale case.
Yes, I'm not going to vote on it, but I think it's clearly not going to be more, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. It's kind of a mixed neighborhood. Some of the houses already have been expanded, including vertically up.
Next door.
And I think you were only, you're only increasing existing nonconformities, I can't say it, not creating any new ones. I do think probably, even though it's north of 28, we would probably want to put the construction on, the condition on that you have no substantial exterior demolition or construction or new landscaping in the period between June 30 and Labor Day, both 2019 and 2020, in case your project gets delayed, just because of the traffic conditions.
Right.
It's a narrow street and, you know, it's off the main street, but it's still kind of narrow down there.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Donahue.
I find the home to be in keeping with the neighborhood, even with the current plans for an addition, and I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Thank you.
Dino Capoli.
Yeah, I don't think it substantially increases the nonconformities to, nonconformities to the point where it's going to be a detriment, so I agree.
Okay, thank you. We'll entertain a motion in the case unless there's any further comments from the board.
I move, the board hereby approves under case 2018-35, a special permit for, to Nancy A. Taylor and Peter Taylor to add a second floor living space in a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. That application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, 325, Table 2; Area Regulation, Section 325, Table 3; Height and Bulk Regulation is set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 57 Corner Wood Drive, MAP 12, Partial F1-5, in the RH District. And we have found that the documents submitted and, and for the planning and the, or the alteration or reconstruction of this nonconforming, single-family residential structure, it meets the Gale case in that there are no new nonconformity and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. It does meet the Gale, the Gale case. Because of the property is located in a close residential location, there can be no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 through 2000, through September 2019 or 2020, if need be.
We usually say Labor Day.
During those two periods, Labor, I'm sorry, June 30 to Labor Day, both 2019 and 2020, in between, you can, you can...
The goal is to be done by April.
Your thing, in accordance with the plans submitted.
Yeah, right, and, and the application and the special permit is in accordance with all the documents and all of the document, all the documents and plans submitted with the application.
Can I have a second, please? Mr. Donahue, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted, thank you.
Maybe you would tell these people what we mean when we talk about the time limits on landscaping?
I did, I added landscaping.
No, 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 what we mean by that.
It's just because of the, you know, substantial, the landscaping would be substantial, new landscaping, where you're going to have a lot of landscape trucks. If you have normal landscaping, we don't care about that.
You can plant bushes.
The whole thing is the traffic congestion during the summer. Even now, some of the streets are very tough to get by when people are landscaping or there's contractors' trucks.
Right.
So we just, we put that in, is, to make the neighbors happy, frankly, because during the summer, that's an issue, because everybody's here in the summertime.
Right.
We pull the old bushes out because they're old, and we're just probably putting new shrubs in, you know, when we're done, so.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. One through eight.
Won't be able to do that with your hands right now. I might have to do it left-handed. Or I will delegate you to do it. In fact, I think I'm going to delegate you to do my putting, too.
Oh, that's, I can, I can help you there.
Yeah.
You're hired.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Hedersted, let's do the next case, please.
Case 2018-36, Stephen McKenna and Ellen McKenna, through their agent, Christopher Vincent, have applied for a special permit to construct an addition onto a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2; Area Regulation and Section 325, Table 3; Height and Bulk Regulation is set forth in MGL 40A, Section 6. The property is located 19 Pine Needle Lane, MAP 4, Partial T1-21, in the RH1 zoning District. There are no written comments or from the, from the town departments or from any interested parties.
Yes, sir, if you could introduce yourself, please. Well, wait, before that, we'll have voting on this case, the same five members, Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, and Ms. Mayhew. I will not vote, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Christopher Vincent. I'm representing Stephen Ellen McKenna. I'm the builder, they're clients of mine. They want to construct a, a master bathroom addition at the northerly side of their building. Excuse me. It does encroach a bit into the, into the setback that's required, is 25 feet. We are at 24.5 feet, which is six inches. The, you see on the, near the garage, it's the lower right-hand corner of the lot, the existing building is at 24.3 feet off of the lot lines. We're not increasing the nonconformity here. We also, because there's two shell driveways that count against the lot coverage, we're 1% over the allowable lot coverage if we add on the additional 120 square feet. He did have an impervious asphalt driveway that he removed several years ago to put in that, the pervious shell driveway. And that's where we stand over before you tonight, seeking approval.
Just one second, I'm lost on the plan here. Ah, okay.
Driveway on this side.
Yeah, okay, got it. Shell driveway, okay, the driveway's going to remain?
It is.
Where it is. Okay, so, anything further, sir?
No.
Ms. Muller.
Yes, do I understand that because of where this is, and I did go see it, it's two front yard setbacks?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And so, front's not, the green needle side is the one that's changing?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. No further questions.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no questions. After reviewing the documentation, it looks like it, there's no new nonconformity proposed. It meets, or it continuation of existing nonconformity, therefore I believe it meets the Gale case. And I do not believe it would need any, any requirements to limit the construction during the, during the, during the summer. Does any, anybody think they need it because of the location?
Yes.
They do? So we'll put that condition in.
Very green needle is, they're...
It's tight little neighborhood.
Oh, yeah, I can see it, right, the neighborhood, I can see it. They do. So we will ask that, make a condition that no major, no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period 30 June 28, 2019 through 1 September 2019 or 2020.
I have no questions. Mr. Donahue.
I'm going to say with opinion, it needs the Gale case, there's no further detriment to the neighborhood. Fine.
Mr. Capoli.
What he said.
Ms. Mayhew.
No questions.
I do have one question, Dave.
Yes.
I've just noticed, we've got this chart, and we've got the plot plan, and the numbers on the minimum front setbacks don't agree. This chart says that the current front setback's 25.2, 24.3, and the proposed is 24.5. The other chart says no change.
Yeah, there's two of them.
On the, oh, so yes, on the site plan?
Yeah.
Right. There's no change to the existing, is what he's, to those two, just the new part is going to be the 24.5.
New part is going to be 24.5, but that's not one of the two existing numbers. I'm confused there. I don't have any objection to this, but I am confused about that discrepancy. Am I the only one?
No, it should say 24.5, not no change. It should be as noted in the, in the plan.
Okay.
And not, I'm sorry, not in the plan, but in the...
Right, and, and on the plot plan, it's 24.5.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, on that side, it should be, the minimum setback there is 25 feet.
Right.
Because it's a corner lot.
So it's a new...
But they're already within the setback of 24.9, so they're...
24.3, right.
Good catch.
Can we just...
Where's 24.3?
Assuming, assuming we want to approve this.
Oh, down at the, yes, okay, the other end, right. So I was looking at the other corner. Yes, they're with, already within it, so they're just extending.
So it's really 25.2 and 20, 25.2 and 24.5, is that what you're saying?
Here, it's 24.5, no change.
Right.
So can we, assuming we want to approve this, can we make that part of our approval?
Yes.
Yes, I'll do that.
Good catch, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. What I'll do, if it's approved, Sheila, I'll stamp this plan, and when, we'd like you to submit a revised plan, if you would. When the revised comes in, you can just substitute, put the stamp on the revised, because we'll have to have this one stamped. And is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to this application or against? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Oh, there it is.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
All right, public hearing is closed. Ms. Muller, what do you think?
Yes, I think it's consistent with the Gale case, and it's fine for the neighborhood.
Mr. Hedersted.
It is consistent with the Gale case, there's no new conformity, and it does, it doesn't add any more detrimental, any more detriment to the, to the public or to the, or to the area.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, the house is beautiful, and this, the way the streets are, this is going to be really not too visible back there with the landscaping and whatnot. Great house. Mr. Donahue.
I'm in favor of this wall for the same reasons as my colleagues.
Mr. Capoli.
What he said again.
Ms. Mayhew.
Same, I agree with the rest of the board.
Okay, I will entertain a motion in the case.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, case 2018-36, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby approves a special permit for Stephen McKenna and Ellen McKenna to construct an addition to a pre-existing, nonconforming, single-family dwelling. The application was pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, 325, Table 2; Area Regulations, 325, Table 3; Height and Bulk Regulations is set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 9 Pile Needle, Pine Needle Lane.
19.
MAP 4, 19, Pine Needle Lane, MAP 4, Partial 1-21, in the RH1 zoning District. This approval is based upon a finding that, that where the applicant submitted the documents planned an alteration or reconstruction of a nonconforming, single-family residence structure, that is in accordance with the Gale case, and no new nonconformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because of the property is located in close residential location, there will be no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period 30 June 2019 or through September 2019 or...
See, that's the part I...
Same period during September 2020. With, with the further addition or further consideration that the certified plot plan will be resubmitted, correcting the front, the minimum front setback existing from 25.2 to 24.3 to 25.2 and 24.5. That will be the only change in the plot plan.
Actually, that change should be to the proposed, not to the existing.
It's listed on, under the existing, and it says no change in the proposed.
Right, the proposed should be 24.5, though, if you look at the plan.
Right.
No, that's where they're, they're changing it, to 24.5.
This goes to 24.5?
The 24.3 is okay.
No, no, here, because this matches its dimension.
Yeah, see, that's on the proposed.
The text note change will go away and become 24.5.
I'm sorry, it's 24.3, and then it's...
24.5.
4.5, and underneath the note change. Take a, take out the word "no change" and put in 24, put in 25.2 and 25, 24.5.
Yes. I'll just write it so it'll be, because it applies to all of them. Just to finish your motion.
All work to be, well, work as a further consideration, all work will be in accordance with the plans. I did say that, up in here.
Oh, okay, somebody said...
We got a clarification on the dates of no construction. It's not all the way through September, usually.
June 30th to Labor Day.
Labor Day.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, June 30 through Labor Day. Okay, could, I have a second, please?
Second?
Mr. Capoli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted.
It's the first sentence up here.
Okay. Ah, okay.
I got to change mine, too.
Can you do a nice bathroom on 10 by 12? It looked like it was going to be...
You don't want to go too much smaller than that.
I didn't think so. Double vanities?
Double vanity, it's a smaller shower.
Yeah.
4 by 4 shower.
Oh.
Double vanity with some cabinets to the side.
Uh-huh, nice.
That's it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Hedersted, call our next case, please.
You ready to go? All right. You ready to go?
Yes. Thank you.
The board hereby will hear case 20-18, I'm sorry, 2018-37, Jack and Ellen Cooney LLC, through their agent, attorney, William Crowell.
Crowell rhymes with soul.
Crowell. Like the bird. Crowell.
The bird, Crowell, have applied for a special permit or an alternative or variance for the construction of a screen porch within the setback. The application is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Harwich, Section 325, Table 2; Area Regulation, 325, Table 3; Height and Bulk Regulation is set forth in MGL Chapter 40A, Section 6. The property is located at 16 Satucket Road, MAP 14, Partial, is that a Q6? In the RH1 zoning District.
Voting on the case will be Ms. Muller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, and Ms. Mayhew. I'll not vote. If you could introduce yourself for the record, please, Attorney Crowell, and who's with you?
Yes, Attorney William Crowell from Harwich Port, and I have Kathy De Meyer with me from Encore Construction, who is proposing to build the, the screen porch for Jack and Ellen Cooney LLC, who are my clients in Florida, and they could not be here tonight. The, I've submitted a copy of the assessor's map. The property in question is at 16 Satucket Road in Harwich Port, sort of, do... sort of, uh, due south from the little triangle, the townhouse triangle, the park, about halfway to the, to the shore. We submitted a certified plot plan by Moran Engineering with existing conditions and proposed conditions dated October 23, 2018, and it shows the proposed 10 by 34 porch on the southerly side of the building, the single-family residential dwelling as it faces Satucket Road. There are also the building and elevation plans by Encore Construction that also show the proposed elevations, what it would look like from the street, and so forth. That's the only proposed construction or alteration to that single-family residence. You also have a, should have a copy of the so-called denial letter by the building commissioner, indicating that we need a special permit because the proposed porch on the west side would be within the 20-foot setback that's required now, and it also currently exceeds, already exceeds the site coverage, and we're looking to increase that slightly due to the square footage of the screened-in porch. So on the westerly side of the dwelling, that you can see, the dwelling currently is 10.3 on the rear corner. 10.3, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming, it's supposed to be 20, and you can see that the dwelling is 10.5 feet on the southerly, south-westerly corner, and then we're looking to add the proposed porch would be, which would be a little bit further from the setback, at 11 feet. So we're not coming closer, we're going back a little bit, about four to six inches from the distance of the rear corner, which is 10.3. So, in that situation, I would argue that we're, we meet the requirements of the bylaw, where we're going along the same line as the existing encroachment without increasing that encroachment. It's a special permit situation. But also, you could argue that it's a Gale case situation as well, because we're increasing the amount of the structure that's going to be within the 20-foot, 20-foot setback. Either way, I think we comply with the bylaw and the requirements of the Gale case, because we're not creating a new non-conformity, we're intensifying an existing non-conformity. As far as the site coverage is concerned, that the building commissioner cites, or notes, and you'll see the grid on the, on the plan, the site coverage maximum is 35% in that RH1 zone. The structure of the building currently is at 48.3, so it's pre-existing, non-conforming. We're seeking to intensify that under the Gale case to, a little bit to 51.9%. Our argument is that, under the bylaw and the Gale case, that constructing the new proposed porch along the same line as the existing encroachment, and increasing the site coverage a little bit over 3%, about 3.5%, would not constitute a substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood. And we would ask that you grant the special permit, and also, keeping in mind that we would, we don't think that we would cause a substantial increase in noise, odors, fumes, congestion, traffic, or the like, as a result of the screened-in porch. Thank you.
Ms. Mueller?
I, I have a question, that's just for my own education. I see the porch comes in a little bit on either side from the house, why? I'm sure there's a reason for doing that.
Well, part of that is aesthetics, just not.
Instead of having the straight line, that's what I wondered.
Just architecturally, it's a better look.
Okay, that's, that's what I was wondering about. I'm satisfied that this meets the Gale case, I think it will make life nicer for the residents of the house, and I also think it's appropriate for the neighborhood, and the neighbors will appreciate it. It'll bring people to the street, and chatting, and nice. No other questions.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I have no questions, I believe it meets the Gale case, and look forward to, to seeing it seating proposed porch put on the building.
Yeah, I believe it meets the requirements of the Gale case. Technically, I'm not sure, it's an extension along the same line, because you do have that .51-inch gap there, but it meets the Gale's case, so.
That's why I said, or, or, under the Gale case, it's not, it doesn't fall right in line with the,
Right.
so to speak, with the bylaw, or the, or the side of the house.
Mr. Donahue?
I just think aesthetically, it's going to improve the backyard.
I agree with the board members, no questions.
Ms. Mayhew?
Yep, same, no questions.
If you look at this front rendering, you see that little jog in, and you can see what Mr. Meyer is saying about it, it increases the aesthetic appeal.
Is there anyone in the public would like to speak to this application, for or against? Hearing no one, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, public hearing is closed. Why don't the board members state their feelings on the case, starting with Ms. Mayhew, we'll go over to this side.
Oops, sorry. I'm comfortable that it meets the conditions of the Gale case, and that it does not significantly intensify the non-conformance that already exists.
Mr. Coppoli?
I agree.
Mr. Donahue?
Three, I agree.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I agree.
Five.
Ms. Mueller? I will entertain a motion in the case, please.
Mr. Chairman, under case 2018-37, the zoning board of appeals hereby grants a special permit to Stephen McKenna, to Jack and Ella Cooney LLC for a special permit, I guess I already said, repeating, for the construction of a screen porch within the setbacks. The application has been made in accordance with the Code of Towne of Howard, Section 325, Table 2, Area Regulation, Section 325, Table 3, Height and Bulk Regulation, as set forth in the MGL Chapter 48, Section 6. The property is located at 16 Satucket Road, Map 14, Partial Q6, in the RH1 zoning district. This approval is based upon the findings where the applicant submitted documents and plan, and have planned an alteration or reconstruction of a non-conforming, single-family residence. That now meets the Gale case, and there is no new non-conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Because the property is located close residential location, there can be no new construction, new, no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period 30 June 2020 through, one September 2020, I'm sorry, try to change that, 2019 through September 2019, and/or 2020 through September 2020.
June 30th through Labor Day. Yeah. 2019 and 2020.
Right, 2019.
And 2020. Yes. Okay, a second, please.
Second?
Okay, Mr. Coppoli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's that condition, not through September.
I like your tie.
Period 30 June 2020 through, one September. Through one September.
Labor Day.
Labor Day shift.
Yeah, Labor Day.
One of those. Bloody holiday, to make it perfect.
You want this, too?
No, no, I haven't.
Okay, Mr. Hederstedt, if you could call 2018-38, please.
Yep, I will, just a second.
Okay.
Case 2018-38. Barbara A. Franklin, trustee of the Ballinacura Trust, otherwise her agent attorney, William Crowell, has applied for a special permit, or in the alternative, a variance, to create an additional second-floor habitable space by building a dormer on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The applicant is pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, Section 325-54, and Table 2, Area Regulation, set forth in MGL 48, Section 6. Property is located at 5 Neahoden Street, Map 12, Partial X3-1A, in the RH1 zoning district, and the correction is applied, that the applicant has applied for a special permit, or in the alternative, a variance.
Okay, we'll have voting, the same five. Ms. Mueller, Mr. Hederstedt, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Coppoli, and Ms. Mayhew. I will not vote. Attorney Crowell, if you could please introduce yourself, and who's with you at table?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Attorney William Crowell from Howard's Port, and I'm representing this evening Barbara Franklin, trustee of the Ballinacura Trust, is that right?
Ballinacura.
There we go. So I have the engineer here, Fergal Brennick, with me.
Did he come from Ballinacura?
He did, he did originally, I'm sure, but he happens to be married to the owner. So that's, he's dual, dual capacity. The property is down on Nahoyden Street in Howard's Port.
Thank you for that clarification.
You're welcome. And I'm sure that you'll agree, there's not much traffic down there in the summer, bound by Jake Rooney's and along the.
The A and W, right.
A and W, Brooks Road. So, seriously, we anticipate your proposed condition. If you see fit to grant the special permit. So I submitted the plot plan by Moran Engineering dated October 23, 2018, that shows the, the single-family residents in question, and it says existing and proposed conditions, and you ask, well, what are the proposed conditions? There's no change to the footprint, at all. This is a second-floor dormer on the rear of the property that is being proposed. We also submitted Mr. Brennick's building plans and elevation plans for the renovation, as well as the denial letter by the building commissioner, who indicates that we need a special permit, because we're, the rear dormer is creating more habitable space within the rear setback, and the, and the side setback of, of 14 and 1/2 feet. The rear setback is probably okay, because it's 14.6 to the deck, but more than 20 feet to the back of the house. But the sideline on the east side, the new habitable space on the second floor would be within the 20-foot setback. So it's a Gale case situation, again, of intensifying an existing non-conformity. The Brennicks, I'm sorry, Ms. Franklin and Mr. Brennick bought the property, bought the house in 2009, and they had two children, they were three years old and three months old. They now have three children, and there's three bedrooms in the house. They now have three children, and the ages are 12, 9, and 7. So what they want to do, the first floor currently has three bedrooms. They want to keep the master bedroom on the first floor, and put two bedrooms upstairs to get some distance, and some space, and maybe some peace and quiet here and there, so that the children are all upstairs. They've outgrown the home, but they wanted, they, they love the home, they, they love Howard, they take part in community affairs. It is a second home, but they come down here as much as possible, and they want to keep that location. So, they've already been to the Board of Health, and gotten the approval of the Board of Health for the renovations, the rearranging of the bedrooms, and, because there was an existing order of conditions by the Board of Health, so they've gotten their blessing on this project. So again, there would be no change to the footprint, and our argument is that there would be no substantial detriment to the entire neighborhood, and no substantial increase in noise, traffic, fumes, odors, congestion, or the like. And ask us to grant the special permit this evening. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for putting the height on the plan, we always look for that, that's the first thing we look for, and almost never, never on the plans, I don't know why. Okay, Ms. Mueller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Hederstedt?
I have no questions, I, in my review of the documentation and the plans submitted, it meets the Gale case.
I have no questions, Mr. Donahue?
I have none, just a comment, I can understand the need, the need for privacy.
Where, where is Ballinacura?
It's in, it's a town in County Cork where Barbara and I grew up.
Oh, okay.
Spillage, actually.
Couldn't quite catch the accent.
Are you a member of the Sons of Aaron?
No, I'm not, actually.
You're not, why are you not?
I know plenty of people who want me to become a member, but I prefer to.
That'd be a condition on the permit, but you're up there.
Spend the time on Earl Road Beach.
Ms. Mayhew?
No questions.
Is there anyone in the public that would like to speak to this application? Hearing no one, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second, public hearing's closed. Ms. Mueller?
I support this application based on the information that the petitioner has provided to us, and I think it meets the conditions of the Gale case, and it's not a substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Mr. Hederstedt?
I approve that it meets the Gale case, the only, it's, the only condition we'll put on it is the, because of the restriction in the, in the neighborhood as far as traffic is concerned, so we'll put that special condition on it. Other than that, I have no other comments.
Mr. Donahue?
No, I'm satisfied, the addition will be an enhancement of the neighborhood.
Mr. Coppoli?
Agree with the board members.
I agree with the board.
Ms. Mayhew? Okay, I'll entertain a motion in the case.
Mr. Chairman, the zoning board of appeals hereby approves case 2018-38, submitted by Barbara A. Franklin, trustee of the Ballinacura Trust, through, has provided a special permit to create an additional second-floor habitable space by building a dormer on a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling. The application was made pursuant to the Code of Towne of Howard, 325-54, and Table 2, Area Regulations as set forth in MGL 48, Section 6. The property is located at 5 Nahoden, Nahoyden Street, Map 12, Partial X3-1A, in the RH1 zoning district. The board has approved this special permit based upon the findings submitted by the application, applicants submitted in the documents, plan. application, applicants, submitted in the documents, planned for the alteration or construction, reconstruction of a non-conforming, single-family residence structure. That is in accordance with the Gale case, and that there are no new conformities, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. With the condition that, because the property is located in a close residential district, residential district, there can be no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period twenty June nineteen, twenty June twenty nineteen through Labor Day twenty nineteen, or twenty twenty through Labor Day twenty twenty.
Okay. I think that last part was June thirty through Labor Day twenty twenty.
I believe I said that, but if I didn't, I correct it, correct myself in saying it's thirty June.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Special permit granted.
Very much.
Thank you for your time.
Have good holidays.
You're welcome, thank you. Yes, you also.
Mr. Brennick, would you like this back?
I would.
I do think, though, if you really want to get some distance, you would have put your rendition down on South Yarmouth. I mean, I had three. Three myself, yes, I remember.
It's always nice and quiet down at the Suns.
Thank you for your time.
I want a membership to me.
I can't tell.
Are you?
I can barely tell.
I used to live not too far from there, in Clonakilty.
Dean.
May I see your.
Sheila, more notes next time, please.
I picked a bar and a pub called. The Anzugang.
I'm, I'm gonna read.
Anzugang?
Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you. That's a great idea.
I just was here for summer, but I, I used to.
Okay, Mr. Hedersted, our last case, please.
Case two zero one eight dash thirty-nine. MLDK LLC, through their agent, Anthony Michael Ford, have applied for a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling within the setbacks. The application is pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, three twenty-five, section, I'm sorry, three twenty-five, table-two, area regulation, section three twenty-five, table-three, heightened bulk regulation is set forth in MGL forty-eight, section-six. The property is located in twenty Central Avenue, map six B, partial L one twenty-three in the RH two zoning district, with a Howard's historical, historic, historic district, historical commission letter that has been sent to the board, signed by Amy Banford, that the structure was actually built less than a hundred years old, is less than a hundred years old. It was actually constructed in nineteen twenty. As such, the historic notice of intent is not required in this case.
All right, Attorney Ford, if you could introduce yourself for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the zoning board, Mike Ford. And I'm representing Mark and Linda Bursette, who are the owners of this property. They hold title in an LLC, but it is Mark and Linda. They're from North Carolina, they're not here this evening. And this is proposed to be a second home for them, a summer home for them. They do have relatives that live right on the other side of Central Avenue, so this is an ideal spot for them. They bought the house approximately a year ago. The house is in very difficult shape. They did have a structural engineer examine it, Mark McKenzie, and the result of that was that they made plans to raise the structure and the garage next to it and build a new house. Out of an abundance of caution, I advised them that we should go to historic because it was so close to the hundred years old. And so we went, we provided all the evidence that we had as to the age of the structure, and the historic committee unanimously found that it was not a hundred years old, and therefore was not subject to their jurisdiction, as Mr. Hedersted has read in that letter. If you had a chance to go out to the site, you'll see that the house is in difficult condition. While it's been inhabited over time by a number of different families, if you were able to look inside, you'll see that it's very much unfinished. There's insulation in the ceilings, but the walls were never finished. It's stick-built, and unfortunately in difficult shape. So, the plan is to raise both structures and to build a new house. The current dwelling is approximately nine hundred and thirteen square feet in size, and the garage is two hundred and fifty square feet. The new house is proposed to be one thousand one hundred and forty-six square feet. So there's not an increase in building coverage, there's a very slight decrease in, in building coverage, if you take the combined square footage of the two structures and then compare it to the new structure that is being proposed. In addition, what they've tried to do is to center the house on the lot, so as to bring it into conformance to the extent they could, or more conformance, I should say, with the setback requirements. You'll see the existing house, at its closest point, is only one point seven feet off of Central Avenue, and the new house is proposed to be five feet off. The existing house, at its closest point, is about six and a half feet from the northerly property line, and the new one will be eleven point seven, so we're getting farther back there as well. The rear property line, the existing house is four feet eight off, the existing barn is four point six off, and at its closest point, the new house will be eight point eight. So again, we've been able to make it more compliant rear, north setback, and front yard setback. They've left more room and actually comply with a setback to the south, and they've done that so that a new Title V septic system can be installed. It's staying at three bedrooms, the current house is three bedrooms, and the new house is proposed to be three bedrooms. But it's currently serviced by an old cesspool that's on the northerly side of the existing house. That's in the area where they proposed the driveway to the north of the house to come in, and that cesspool will be removed, obviously pumped and removed and filled, and the new driveway, small driveway, will go in there. There is a porch in the southeasterly corner of the new house. If you looked at the elevations that were prepared by Zebrat and McCarthy for the new dwelling, those show all four perspectives. The first one is, is the street view facing the east. You'll see the, the porch is on the southerly end of the house in that corner. And then there are views of the south and north elevations. You can see the southerly elevation with the porch as it looks out back towards the water down Central Avenue, and there is a, obviously a dormer on, on that section. And then there's the rear section, which is the west of the elevation on the back. Mr. Chairman, anticipating the question of height, you'll see height is addressed in two places. On the plans itself, it shows the height as, and I'm looking now at the sheet A one, it shows it at twenty-five eight from the first floor, but if you took it from the ground level, it's really about twenty-eight feet. And I say that because I also had Dave Clark, who did the site plan, along with Don Poole, the land surveyor, I had him put the building height calculations right on the bottom, and you'll see them, he took the average grade all the way around the house and came up with the average grade of seventeen-seven, and then added the thirty to it, so the maximum we could have is forty-seven-seven, and we're in at forty-five-three. So we're about twenty-eight feet to the top of the ridge at the highest point. So they've, they've addressed the height really in two places, but I think the more accurate one is the one that's on the site plan.
Okay.
Thank you. So I think what you have here is a situation that meets the Gale case. This is a property that clearly needed to be renovated. I think the house fits into the neighborhood. It is not larger, frankly, in terms of building coverage than what is already there. It improves all of the setbacks. It stays about the same, tiny bit less in terms of building coverage. It does increase site coverage a little bit, site coverage is already over. It goes from forty-one to forty-seven, and that's primarily because they wanted that driveway to the north, be able to get cars off. And there is a patio on the southerly side, down where the septic system will be. So we think that it will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and won't cause any congestion, nuisance, or, or traffic, and we do think it fits within forty-eight-six and the holding of the Gale case. But I'm happy to try and answer questions.
Okay, I forgot to say it at the outset, but voting will be Ms. Mueller, Mr. Hedersted, Mr. Donahue, Mr. Capoli, and Ms. Mayhew. I will not vote. Ms. Mayhew, any questions?
I have no questions.
No, Mr. Capoli.
I think that this will substantially enhance the neighborhood. I think the plans look very nice, and I think the neighborhood will benefit from this.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue. It might just be me, but I did not see the denial letter.
There is a denial letter. It was in the application, the last page, it stated November fifteenth, same day we filed, and he sends us there under the two sections that we cited in the application.
Other than that, I have no further questions. Short driveway, you said, how many cars will be able to?
We think we can get side by side, they think they can get two cars in there.
Okay. As you know, that's.
You have to have it.
Tight, yeah, you have to have two.
Right, right.
And your folks might want to consist, think about an emergency when they have guests where that existing gravel parking is.
Yeah.
Because it's, you know, during the summertime, it's, and even now, down there, Central Avenue, it was so tight, that whole area.
No, you're absolutely correct, Mr. Chairman, and that existent gravel parking area that's in that southeast corner of the lot is, is proposed to remain there as an overflow, just as you indicated.
Good, I'm not gonna make it, propose that it be made a condition, but just something for your folks to think about when they have guests during the summer.
That is a tight area, I understand.
I don't know if they've been down there during the summer yet, but it's.
Yeah.
Mr. Hedersted.
I have no comment.
Ms. Mueller.
No questions, just a comment, really, an eight-burner stove? Feed, they're gonna feed twelve and have an eight-burner stove?
No. I, I didn't look at the stove, to be honest with you. Is that what it shows?
No, no questions or reservations.
Okay, seeing no one in the audience to speak, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
Who was the original mover?
Mr. Capoli, I think. Might have been the first, is who seconded? Donahue? All right, public hearing is closed. Ms. Mueller, you on this one?
I appreciate all the effort that went into fitting this new house on this space. I appreciate especially that the cesspool will be gone. I think this will be a benefit, not a detriment to the neighborhood, and it's covered by the Gale case.
Thank you, Mr. Hedersted.
I have, I have no other comments other than to say that it's based upon the Gale case, and I approve it, it's a marked improvement to the whole area.
Mr. Donahue.
I thought the work of furniture on the front porch was the newest thing around the home. It'll be an improvement on the area.
Mr. Capoli.
Agree with the board.
Ms. Mayhew. I will take a motion in the case, please.
For you, Mr. Chairman, the, the Zoning Board of Appeals hereby grants MLDK LLC a special permit to raise and replace a pre-existing, non-conforming, single-family dwelling within the setbacks. The application has been made pursuant to the Code of Town of Howard, section three twenty-five, table-two, area regulation, and three twenty-five, table-three, heightened bulk regulations are set forth in MGL forty-eight, section-six. The property is, property is located in, on ten Central Avenue, map six B, partial L one twenty-three in the RH two zoning district. This approval is based upon the applicant's submitted documents, planned or alteration or reconstruction of a non-conforming, single-family residential structure. That is in accordance with the Gale case, in that there is no new non-conformity, and there will be no resulting substantial detriment to the neighborhood. Further, because the property is located in such a close residential location, there can be no substantial external demolition, construction, or landscaping during the period thirty June twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty nineteen through Labor Day twenty nineteen, or thirty June twenty twenty through Labor Day twenty twenty.
Should I have a second, please?
Second.
Second, Mr. Capoli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Special permit granted. Thank you very much. Thank you.
I like your holiday tie as well.
Well, thanks.
Holiday, is that a tartan?
I feel that that, no, but I feel it covers holiday. So too. I think it's kind of a, a little.
My daughter gave me that, she's a.
It's spectacular.
She's a bagpiper, so.
Oh, what, what tartan is it?
Nice. What's that?
Which tartan is it?
I'm not sure which tartan it is. She has it in her pocket, I did not have it, and I don't.
Mr. Ford, I sat behind you at that fiddle concert the other.
No, I don't. Sometimes I don't. I don't.
I sat right behind you at that fiddle concert.
Oh, did you really?
Yes, I was very happy when you moved a little.
Oh, okay, that was you behind the case.
I thought it was gonna be a real concert, I didn't know it was gonna be like recitals, empty recitals.
What band does your daughter play in? Pardon? Which band does your daughter play in?
She's an individual bagpiper.
Oh.
Has she been over to the tattoo?
She's been to a lot of tattoos, she's, you're talking about the one in Montreal?
Edinburgh. That's the one to go to.
Yeah, she has been to the University of Glasgow, she got a scholarship to.
Oh, okay.
Study over there for a whole summer.
Well, maybe she went then.
Yeah.
It's hard to get tickets. You gotta, you gotta get tickets way in.
Yeah, you do.
Way ahead.
Halifax Tattoo is also very good, it's July first every year, or around July first.
Halifax.
Yeah.
Mike, you want these plans?
Why not, huh?
Right now, right, glad to see a cesspool.
Number thirty-eight, that's thirty-nine, right, that's it.
Those are pretty. Mr. Ford?
And here's a third.
Thank you. Terrific, thank you. Thank you also. Happy New Year. Okay. On the minutes from on November twenty-eighth, twenty eighteen meeting, I gave Shayla, I think one comment on, what was the case? I can't think of the street.
It was Cottonwood.
Co, oh, okay.
It was the wall with fireplace in it.
The fireplace case?
Oh, yes.
And we needed to put in the condition that they had put in three white pines of equivalent six-foot or higher on the, to screen the fireplace from the neighbor on that side, so she's gonna add that.
I did, I did have it in the decision.
Oh, perfect.
And what I said was conservation-approved plantings.
Okay, you can just track the same language, we'll put it in the minutes. Did anyone else have any comments on those minutes?
I will make those changes to the.
Only thing I can say is I read them thoroughly, and for some reason or other, the N, the letter N, small n, does not come out in the print. It only comes out like three-quarters of the, or almost a little bit more than halfway, so you don't know what the word is, you have to look at it really hard. So I don't know what's, what's wrong with either your computer or.
It might be your computer.
Good answer.
Every time I read it, the N, every word that had an N in it was, was, the N wasn't completed. It came about three-quarters of the way over and then stopped.
Because I have these printed from the same document, and these are all okay.
Well, subject to, I'm sorry, subject to that one change, I want to entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes approved.
Okay, one other thing, you will be getting probably at your homes a notice of appeal on the permit.
Perkamine, permecane. Dave, I will not be hearing. Dave, I will not be here for the January meeting.
You will not be here?
I will not be here for the January meeting.
Well, I hope you'll be having a good time, wherever you will be.
I will, I'll be in Coronado.
Oh, fun.
What, that's Spain?
You're not gonna be sitting there?
Wait, where's Coronado, Spain?
San Diego.
Oh, oh.
I was thinking that too.
You got relatives out there?
I have a good friend from when we were young in Boston, and we've both been married and divorced and remarried and moved around, and she now splits her year between her husband's home in Alaska and her home in Coronado.
Well, very nice.
Well, have a nice time.
It's a beautiful country, except you'll enjoy the traffic.
How many cases do we have for January?
Five, wait a minute, I, I, my deadline hasn't happened yet.
Oh, okay.
However, I have four denial letters that have gone out today, and I, I think there's one other, so I think it's five.
Okay, and you're gonna put up on our website the January, the 2019 schedules of hearings?
It's on the town.
It's on there already?
Yeah.
Okay.
And didn't you give it to us in hard copy?
I did, anybody need another, I can send them email.
Yeah, I didn't, did I get one? I must have missed it.
I can resend, and it is on the, it is on the town website.
Okay.
On the last case, we had that.
Today?
Today, we had that special letter that came in from the Historic, Hysterical Society. Should that be part of the package?
Not necessary, really.
I think that whenever another board or committee takes charge of making a decision, they're just telling us about it, we don't have any control over.
Okay.
You know, whether that is a part, they have their own jurisdiction, they're saying they, they didn't need to be involved.
And are those two bodies or one body now? Have they?
It's called HDHC, so it's one body.
Okay, so it's the Historic District and the, okay.
So they just had determined that the house wasn't 100 years old, and he said over an overabundance of caution, they went to be certain of that, so they didn't have to worry about the total demo.
In today's paper, if you didn't see it, there was an interesting case where, I think it was Falmouth, but now I don't remember, where the board turned down three variances, people want to build a house on an island, so I thought that was kind of interesting.
They've been fighting it for years, apparently.
This is the second time they've turned down the variances.
And now the Wapanoags.
The Wapanoags have shellfish in rights.
It's gonna interfere with their shellfish.
Fairly interesting and complicated set of facts, yeah, it's in today's Cape Cod Times. And what's something else, but now, I cannot, oh, I know, in connection with the case, Attorney Reed, the one that we're gonna get served, we served probably tomorrow, the next day, Attorney Reed asked whether or not Shayla would give out the home addresses of the board members. And I don't, I mean, I don't have a problem with it, he went to the assessor's office and got it himself, but I don't know, I don't mind.
I wrote back that I was uncomfortable doing that, but I gave him the front office information and said there were other avenues, I just don't believe that should be the avenue.
I agree with that.
Okay, so if you don't want, I don't care one way or the other.
It's a matter of public record.
It's a matter, they can go to the assessor's office.
It's not Shayla's job to have to look at it.
Oh, no, no, it's, I think it's a matter of public record on, by virtue of our.
You can look at our real estate records.
Just makes it do extra work, so I'm happy to give them out, but if you don't want to, we don't have to, he can dig them out.
The motion right, right up, I've given, I have given you, I will retype it and send it down to you.
Thank you.
To you, and to you.
I appreciate that.
Did you get the ends all lined up?
Send it to everybody.
Yeah, because it'll be helpful, if, if you're not here, then we'll have, everybody will have it.
If somebody is here, someone's gonna send it to you.
Mr. Hedersted, I would, I'd like to book with you now for the writing, the signing of decisions, because I'm gonna be gone a bit, and because of the holidays and whatever, and two weeks would bring us to, what did I say, January?
6/3?
The hearing is closed, I assume?
No, not yet, we haven't, no, we're still on the tape.
Still hot.
Hearing is closed?
No.
No, we're being recorded?
Yes.
That's okay. So January the 2nd is, is kind of the date that two weeks generally I have to supply them, I don't know whether the holidays make a difference, I'll be working on my time off, but will you be around on January 2nd to sign decisions?
January 2nd, yes.
Okay, I will email you, but let's put it on that.
Yes, if you email me that, because I, I never remember to bring my calendar, so. Does anyone else have any new business, further business? I'll entertain a motion to close our hearing.
Slow move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Hearings closed. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year all.